Counselor Azadi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Everything that you're saying is being broadcast in the room. I just wanted to give you that reminder. All right, welcome to the July 15th City Council Study Session. We're going to get started here. I think we first should check and see if we would like to go into executive session before we start the agenda for the regular study session.
Yes, Mayor Potem, there is reason, well, for a possible executive session. It's an executive session to consult with the city attorney on legal issues involving the Greenway Trail pursuant to WMC 113 C8 and CRS 246 402 4B if that is what council desires.
So I can, first, we can take a poll. I'd also like to check to see if we need to confirm that we both have Counselor Azadi and Mayor McNally online.
Counselor Azadi and Mayor McNally are both online, yes.
Okay. And do we need to make any motions for them to participate?
No, because it is a study session.
Okay. All right. Well, I will start with the mayor online and poll if she would like to go into exec session.
I will, I'm happy to go in if the rest feel they need to have something that they need to discuss.
Counselor Azadi?
Same with the mayor.
Okay, as we go along, if you want to confirm.
Mayor Potem, may I?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is actually a vote to determine whether or not to go into executive session, so I think what we really need is yea or nay from everyone.
Okay, so I will ask again, I'll start with the mayor and we'll change this into a vote if you would like to go into executive session. So mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
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 Okay, sounds like, oh, and yes.
Mayor and Counselor Azadi, would you please log off and go back to the first link that was labeled executive session?
Okay, then the rest of us will move into exec session? All right. Then the rest of us will move into exec session.
Thank you for your patience. We're just waiting to get our other two council members online.
Okay, we have the mayor.
Okay, we have the mayor.
All right, we're restarting our city council study session for July 15th. I want to thank everybody who's come tonight. And we do have a couple of things on the agenda. We'll try and keep pretty short before we start with the presentations. So I first just want to check in with the council members if they have a city council report.
I do not.
Just, you can... Okay, Councilor Haath?
Yes. So the Human Services Board met on Wednesday. And they decided which nonprofits will be awarded grants. And so that was interesting to see that process firsthand for the first time. But I have a question. So the person who has been on the Human Services Board the longest has been there for six years. And we haven't changed the amount in at least longer than six years. And there are also a lot, or there is a lot of funding that nonprofits have been getting federally that have been cut significantly. The state has backfilled some of that, but only part of it. About thirteen percent, because it's forty percent of the grant funding is not coming in. And with what the state has covered, it's twenty-seven percent. And so, and then there was also, like Kids First was, so they're moving into a bigger facility. So they needed one-time funding to help with the remodeling for the bigger facility. And so my question is, is can we raise that amount? Can we put something? And then also would like to talk to council about what would be an amount that other counselors would feel comfortable raising it. Because I don't want to ask for a number that city council wouldn't approve. So I don't know if it would be better to have a discussion about that or just put something on to vote.
I would think that would be something that we could include in the budget process as something, as a conversation item for the amount.
Yes. So if I could answer the question. So first of all, on July 29th in study session, the council will specifically look at its sponsorship budget and the human services budget for the 2025 budget process. And so the council will have the opportunity to increase funding, decrease funding, reappropriate funding. And so that's all part of the budget process. But your first kick at the can, if you will, of that funding amount will be on July 29th.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then went to movie in the park, saw the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. We were there before the movie started. We were hanging out with the Historical Society in their tent. We were there to just talk to residents, answer questions. And it was very well attended. And I hadn't been to a movies in the park. And it was really neat seeing how they do the projector and everything. So that was, that was exciting. But that's the end of my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Ireland?
So I went to the wards advisory meeting. And there was lots of ideas at the meeting. Everyone had a different idea. So it'd be nice to see or interesting to see if they come to any consensus. But if they don't, they're going to bring them all to us anyway. So that was the one I went to. And I also went to election board, which is my first time at that. The only thing that we really do for the election is certify the ballot measure. Because that's the only thing the city has coming up on the ballot, if we get the wards measure on the ballot. Also, I went to the movie in the park. And there was a good turnout. And I also went to the historical baseball game with my two oldest grandsons. And they'd never been to a baseball game. So they thought it was interesting. No one had baseball mitts. So back in the day, they didn't have a baseball mitt. So that was interesting to see catching without a baseball mitt. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilor Dematte?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to mention, I forgot, I also went to the baseball game. So a special thank you to the police and Parks and Rec people that helped the Historical Society put that on. Always a really good event. It's been interesting through the years how many more people show up to that. So it was a fantastic turnout and continues to be a good event. And so I just wanted to make sure that we thanked staff that helped.
Does the mayor or Councilor Rosati have anything? I cannot hear anything from Councilor Rosati. So I will also just say thank you to staff for putting on so many events in the past few days in a hundred-degree heat. And all the volunteers as well. I will move over to City Manager Freitag if you have a report.
Yes, I do. Mayor Pro Tem. So mayor, mayor Pro Tem, counselors, we'll run through a couple of quick updates. So next slide, please. So I just wanted to remind the community about all the swim options and/or water options that are available to the community here in the city of Westminster. So first of all, splash pads, Irving Street Park splash pad, McFaul Park splash pad, nature playground, water feature, and the downtown Westminster Plaza Fountain are all opportunities for children to cool off and enjoy themselves in the summer heat. The Swim and Fit Center, that facility is currently under renovations, but the pool remains open to the public. And so if anyone wants to use that, that's certainly an option. City Park Rec Center offers an indoor pool and just a wonderful play area. And so you can also enjoy an outdoor splash pad there. So a great facility. Countryside Pool, also another opportunity for folks to get out of the summer heat. And then with our partnership with Highland Hills Park and Rec District, you can access Water World and Carol Butts Park Pool at the same resident rates enjoyed by Highland Hills residents. So lots of opportunities to escape the summer heat. Next slide, please. And then this is something folks may or may not have been aware of. But the last week of June, the city hosted the Triple Crown International Challenge Softball Tournament down at Christopher Fields. It was a three-day tournament with an opening ceremonial parade, which celebrated 20 countries that were participating. The teams were formed through competitive process where players applied to play by submitting videos of their skill sets and also explaining their heritage for the country that they wanted to represent. And so another great Westie win. Next slide. Some things to know, Special Permits and License Board meeting goes this win stage July 17th, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., right here in council chambers. The next wards advisory committee meeting is Thursday evening here at City Council Boardroom from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. And our next city council meeting is Monday, July 22nd, right here at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers. Next slide. No information only items this evening. Next slide. And as always, want to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. We encourage folks to reach out, contact us at the city. You can call my office at 303-658-2006, email me directly at mfreitag@westminsterco.gov. Lastly, we encourage folks to like us on Facebook, to follow us on X, to check us out on Instagram, and certainly to ring our bell on Nextdoor. Pending any questions, that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are going to move into presentations. We do have a, what are we calling this? A shot clock? We have a clock over to the left of presenters where we have sixty minutes set for both groups of presenters. We would like to be able to get through both of the presentations from the presenters and then go into questions following that. I think that will be helpful as many of our questions that we might ask might be answered by the second group of presenters. So we might take it, we might need to take a short break between the two groups. But that's how we can move forward. So with that, I will turn it over to staff to start, oh, sorry, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll go ahead and introduce everybody that's at the table. But again, just for the group that's in attendance this evening, the council heard an update about the Greenway Trail and a bridge that was proposed to connect both sides of the Greenway Trail over Indiana Avenue earlier this late winter, early spring. That created a lot of questions. And so the council asked for us to put together a, if you will, balanced study session where, you know, they heard multiple perspectives. And so that's what we've brought you here tonight. I'm going to turn the podium and the mic over to Joe Rialli. He's our open space superintendent. He and Ms. Brenna will provide kind of some of the background, the history, how we got here. And then, as you said, we'll bring forward two different groups, each limited to an hour presentation, to provide two different perspectives. And then at the end, we'll finish up with that Q and A as the questions arise from the council. I would ask the council, if you have, if someone says something and you have a specific question, note who that was. Because at the end, you'll want to call somebody forward specifically to answer the question. So please note who the guest speaker is. And they will all bring forward their placards so that you know who that speaker is. Okay? And so without any further ado, Mr. Rialli, please.
Thank you. I have some voice issues, so I just want to make sure everybody can hear me okay.
Mr. Rialli, you can move the whole mic.
Thank you. That might help everybody in mine. I appreciate it. Mayor, mayor, oh, still not? Hit it twice. Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, counselors, thank you for your time this evening. As City Manager indicated, I will have to speak directly into the mic. We do have a presentation for you this evening. I do want to just give you a rundown of our speakers and thank them all for attending. Sitting with me is Rachel Brenna. She's the project manager and the, excuse me, the planning director for Jefferson County. So she run through the project outline from that standpoint. In the room today, we have John Libske, he's an retired FBI agent. Dr. Michael Ketterer, professor emeritus at Northern Arizona University. Dr. Deborah Segaloff, Physicians for Social Responsibility. Dr. Sasha Stiles. Diana Diarego, I apologize if I'm ruining anyone's name. Radioactive Waste Projector Project Director at NIRS. Randy Stafford, Rocky Flats Public Health Advocates. David Woods, emeritus Associate Professor, Department of Physics, Colorado School of Mines. Jason Andrews is here with Engineering Analytics. David Lucas with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And Director Tom Hobie with Jefferson County Open Space. In addition, in the room, from CDPHE, Brian Walker, the Site Manager for Rocky Flats Central Operable Unit. Jim Grace, Radiation Control Program Manager. And from the Environmental Protection Agency, Brandon Nichols, Remedial Project Manager for the Rocky Flats Central Operable Unit. Valerie Dornbus, Public Affairs Specialist and Community Involvement Coordinator. Our guests from CDPHE and EPA will not be presenting this evening. They will be available to take limited questions. Certainly, if there are more detailed questions, they will answer in writing. With that, I am going to turn the projection over to Rachel.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, counselors. I'm Rachel Brenna, Strategy and Planning Director for Jefferson County Open Space. I'm privileged to be here tonight, and thank you for inviting me. The presentation that I'm going to give you is really a broad overview of where we are today and how we got here with this project. Many of the things I'm going to cover in the presentation, I'm just going to touch on. And then some of the other presenters will talk about in more detail later in the evening. Before I begin, I just want to acknowledge all of the work that the community members have put into this project, all of the input we've received from them. Also acknowledge the staff of both the City of Westminster and all of the staff in the partner groups and the elected officials that have spent so much time and consideration on this project. So the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail is a grand vision that was put forward in 2012 during the Obama administration by Ken Salazar, the Secretary of the Interior at the time, and Governor Hickenlooper. It was then put forward again by Governor Hickenlooper in the Colorado, the beautiful 16 of 16 Initiative. This is one of sixteen trails in the state that he wanted to promote as a regional connection for communities to recreational activities. It's an eighty-mile regional trail. And its goal is to connect residents to federal properties. This trail connects three national wildlife refuges. That's the Arsenal, Rocky Mountain Arsenal, Two Ponds, Rocky Flats, to Rocky Mountain National Park. It is, there are three phases associated with this project. The first phase connects the Arsenal to Two Ponds and then to Rocky Flats. That phase is complete. It's twenty-three miles of trails that connects a lot of the urban metro Denver area to those federal properties. Phase two connects Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge to Lyons. That is partially complete, using the existing trail system. Visitors can travel from Rocky Flats to Boulder and through Boulder with ease. And then north of that, that is yet to be completed. Phase three is conceptual, and that sends visitors between Lyons and Estes Park and Rocky Mountain National Park. So that one is the grandest part of the vision. This project is really an excellent example of what we do in our state of creating regional trails and connecting people to these federal properties and local communities. It's an opportunity to leverage federal funds to get this trail completed. And it also uses existing trail networks to connect communities to each other. The missing link in this trail between the largely completed Phase One and Phase Two, which is partially completed, is the connections into Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. As this project has moved forward, the agencies and communities around Rocky Flats recognize the need to connect into this property to continue this trail connection. I'll say a little bit about Rocky Flats and the Wildlife Refuge as it's the focus of the connections that we're talking about tonight. Rocky Flats Refuge formerly served as a buffer zone for the Rocky Flats plant that produced nuclear and non-nuclear weapons, including plutonium triggers, from 1952 to 1994. In 1989, the facility's mission shifted to cleanup enclosure. And in 2005, the closure was, the cleanup was completed. And in September 2006, EPA and CDH, CD, PHE granted regulatory approval of the cleanup. At that time, the buffer property was turned over to the Department of Interior to run as a National Wildlife Refuge. And that refuge opened in 2018 for both wildlife and people to enjoy. The central operating unit is a separate parcel in the middle of the refuge. And it is owned and managed by the Department of Energy as a legacy site. That parcel is fenced and permanently closed to the public. The Department of Energy performs ongoing monitoring and testing. And those reports are given to the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council to review. And that council is comprised of elected officials and staff from local agencies. The flap, the federal, the flat program, as we call it, is the Federal Lands Access Program. And the mission of this program is nationally to connect people to federal lands, to provide transportation solutions to allow equitable access to those lands. Currently, there is no safe pedestrian connection into Rocky Flats. So the partner group was put together to address the situation, to make those connections for the Rocky Mountain Greenway and provide safe access into Rocky Flats. The partner group is comprised of Boulder County, City of Boulder, City of Westminster, City of Arvada, and Jefferson County. This group worked together to put together a successful application for funding through this program. This program provides eighty-two point seven nine percent of project costs and requires a local agency match, which in this case is seventeen point two one. in this case is 17.21. A 2016 feasibility study for the Rocky Mountain Greenway from Rocky Flats up to Boulder was conducted, and in that feasibility study, two locations were identified for logical connections into existing trail systems. One of those connections is at Indiana Street, and that would be in the form of a pedestrian bridge over Indiana Street. The other location is at Highway 128 at the north, and that would be an underpass into Boulder County. I'm going to just talk about the financial obligations as a part of this project quickly. There are two, two parts to the financial obligations. The first part is what is the money that has already been spent by the partnering agencies. That money went towards grant scoping, completing the application for the FLAP grant, and SAP, which is the Soil Analysis Plan. That, for the City of Westminster, that's, they contributed 22.5% of that cost, and that amounts to about $33,000. That money has already been invested in this project. The second bit of money is obligated, and that's for design, construction, and air quality monitoring during construction. The City of Westminster is contributing 25, almost 26%, for a total of about 22, sorry, $220,000. So the total investment would be $254,000 and almost $500. So that is about 6.8% of the total project cost. So the current estimate for the project is about $3.2 million, which is a little bit less than the committed funds, which were based on a $3.9 million estimate. I'm going to go back a little bit and talk a little bit more about the FLAP grant and the timeline and what has transpired. In 2016, the FLAP grant was identified as a potential funding mechanism to build the crossings, and at that time, an IGA was signed with the partner group, including the group that I listed, as well as the City of Broomfield, Citying County Broomfield. That first IGA set out a few tenants that needed to be completed prior to moving forward with the crossings and accepting grant money. One of those things was an independent confirmatory analysis performed on soil testing in the, at the crossing locations. That also included public engagement. The other thing that happened was that Jefferson County and the City of Westminster partnered to purchase the Woman Creek property for the completion of the Greenway. In 2021, following the completion of those other efforts, a second IGA was signed with the partner group, including Jefferson County, the City of Boulder, Boulder County, City of Westminster, and the City of Arvada. And the second IGA obligated funding for design and construction of the crossings and included air quality monitoring during construction. In 2022, Jefferson County, on behalf of the partner group, entered into an inter-agency agreement with the Federal Highways Administration to initiate design, the design process for the crossings and obligate federal funds. Following the execution of that IAA, designing and construction commenced. Going back a little bit to the Soil Sampling and Analysis Plan that I spoke about as a part of the first IGA, the process that was followed for that was following procurement. EA, Engineering Analytics, was hired to perform that sampling and analysis plan. A 60-day comment period was held, two open houses in Boulder and Westminster, 90 community members attended, 369 online comments were collected, and 33% of those were technical comments. Based on those comments, the Soil and Analysis Plan, the Sampling and Analysis Plan was revised and finalized, and in February 2020, the sample report came out, and in November of 2020, the final report was produced. In that report, Engineering Analytics did not obtain any result from the soil samples collected and analyzed that indicated a higher risk level than presented in the 2006 Kaiser Hill Report that the DOE used to allow public access into the project area. And that allowed for the second IGA to be signed and for the partner group to move forward. The other, a little bit more about the Woman Creek property acquisition, you can see it here in the dashed line. It is sandwiched squarely between Rocky Flats and Westminster Hills Open Space. It was identified that this property would need to be acquired to complete the trail. At that time, Jefferson County Open Space worked with the City of Westminster to purchase this property from the Woman Creek Reservoir Authority. It's 368 acres. The purchase price was $1.6 million, and both, it was a 50-50 split, so the City of Westminster contributed $815,000, as did Jefferson County. Here are the clauses from both City Westminster, City Council Resolutions, and Jefferson County Board of County Commissioner Resolutions that detail the reason behind the purchase being to allow for the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail. Okay, moving into the design and construction of the crossings, this graphic here shows you from the construction documents what to, what can be expected and what's included in the contract. It's the bridge over Indiana Street, which is located just south of the city, the city and county line, property line there. It also includes about 1,800 feet of trail and a wayside that contains informational kiosk. This informational kiosk is on City of Westminster property and would be visible prior to entering the bridge into Rocky Flats. The information contained on that kiosk would be directed by the City of Westminster. The construction schedule, after signing the IAA, the Federal Highways is administer, is the project manager for this design and construction project for the crossings. The final design happened in late 2021 and went into early '23. Contracting happened at the end of '23 into '24, and they, a contract was signed between Federal Highways and Tribal One. They are, so they're engaged and have been working on the project since early this year. Activities to date are submittals, subcontractor engagement, material, materials procurement. They've also started expending funds to fabricate the bridge off-site and the culvert for the 128 undercrossing. The schedule that I received this morning says that on-the-ground activities will begin in September, beginning with a Highway 128 crossing, and then moving to the Indiana Bridge in January 2025. During both of those activities, additional air quality monitoring will be conducted, and we're working on that procurement process now to make sure that that happens in time with the construction activities. One last thing for this visionary trail is, I just want to emphasize the important, importance of the partnership in this process. You know, this is a unique situation. This trail will serve so many communities and so many people in this area, and the partnership between these agencies has been amazing. The IAA and IGA that we've entered into are binding agreements, and to, to get the money from the FLAP program, we need a local agency match, which this partnership is providing. If there's any failure to adhere to the IGA, if something happens with the IGA and it causes a contract change between Federal Highways and the contractor, that will incur additional costs, and those costs can be passed on to the partner group and the local agencies. So something to pay attention to as we're looking forward in this process. And that's the overview that I've prepared today. Thank you.
Very quickly, I'm just going to run through Westminster's involvement to date in this project. Most of it you've heard, and I'll move quickly past it. But as you just heard, Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail connects Rocky Mountain Arsenal through Stanley Lake. That is the currently constructed section. The trail currently dead ends on Broomfield property, just off the Westminster boundary in the Woman Creek area. This section of trail, including the crossing at Hunter Street, which is a signalized crossing there, the Southwestminster Hills Open Space parking lot, and all of the trails through Stanley Lake, were funded by the Federal Transportation Authority and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. This work was completed prior to the FLAP grant in roughly 20, excuse me, 2016. To date, this council's actions here in 2016, City Council adopted Resolution 24 approving the conditional support for the FLAP grant. As indicated previously, that IGA was conditioned on the finding of a Soil Analysis Plan. That Soil Analysis Plan took a number of years to complete in the interim. It was identified that the Woman Creek Open Space would need to be purchased in fee for the trail to be constructed. Prior to 2019, the City of Westminster had an IGA, actually, I'm sorry, an MOU with the Woman Creek Reservoir Authority to allow recreational access on Woman Creek Authority property. That IG, that MOU was expiring. Woman Creek Reservoir Authority indicated at that time they did not want to be the owner of the Greenway Trail, and in order to complete the Greenway Trail and the, and the soil sample testing, that the city would need to acquire the land. In 2019, the city did approve that purchase agreement. Jefferson County actually led the, led the purchase process, and as part of their purchase, purchased that land, 50-50 split with the city, and that, that deed includes the standard Jefferson County Reverte Clause that we discussed in previous conversations. In 2021, the Soil Analysis Plan was completed, and that was presented to council. Council accepted the findings of the Soil Analysis Plan at that time and approved a revised IGA to continue on with the construction. Since then, in 2022, we had another update here, and that was when we were at the 30% design phase. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our first group of speakers. I want to make sure they're okay with the mics.
So you're going to disconnect.
I'm going to disconnect this, so you may move.
My name is John Lipsky. I'm a retired FBI agent, and I'm a Rocky Flats stakeholder. Thank you for affording me the time to urge this council to withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway. It's associated Federal Lands Access Program Grant and deny any direct access from Westminster to the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. In August of 2023, the Federal Highway Administration denied public comment in their proposal of finding of no significant impact. You saw that bridge before with a previous presentation. Basically, Federal Highway Administration wants to construct a 189-foot bridge from Westminster to the refuge. It doesn't consider the 300-foot right-of-way for the proposed Jefferson Parkway. I don't know what they're going to do about that, if they're going to have a special island between the lanes for people to duck under, I'm not sure. Pedestrian bridge over Indiana Street is to be placed in the most contaminated area of the refuge, known as the wind-blown area, and most contaminated area of the Rocky Flats Operable Unit Three. Mounding to about 20,000 acres. Downwind of the Rocky Flats Amareum Zone, which is the former 903 Lip and Hillside area, a legacy open trench radioactive burial site. That recently underwent revegetation to suppress plutonium flux. Bridge abutments and piers will most likely be buried more than six feet deep, where weapons-grade plutonium 239 has no standard, inevitably disturbing much contaminated soil. U.S. DOE, or the Energy Department, is a fringe manager of its own waste. David Lucas, Fish and Wildlife Service, has been quoted saying, "We believe it's safe for the public and all of our visitors." Let's take a look at that. On June 6, 1989, I served federal criminal search warrants at Rocky Flats, at the Rocky Flats crime scene. It closed, it stopped the production of nuclear bombs. In September of 1989, Rockwell International sued the U.S. Department of Energy and EPA because they were required to do illegal activity. In September of 1989, Rocky Flats was added to the Circula National Priorities List. In June of 1989, the culmination of my criminal investigation, a federal judge approved the criminal plea agreement with Rockwell for felonies and six misdemeanors. The picture I'm showing you is where Rockwell said they weren't going to spray irrigate 80 million gallons a year over legacy waste burial sites, but they did, and they pled guilty to it, count nine, contaminated the Stanley Lake and the Great Western Reservoir. In February 2006, a federal civil jury found Dow Chemical and Rockwell, Rocky Flats contractors, had contaminated off-site property. That was the Cook litigation, with weapons-grade plutonium 239, and the jury said it will be there indefinitely. The capacity of plutonium 239 from Rocky Flats is in this Department of Energy image, and it shows what it looks like in the green towards Westminster. This bottom picture is from the EPA. It shows the, the boundaries of the Operable Unit Three, which includes the dog park for Westminster where the bridge will be planted. In May of 2007, EPA delisted the unremediated refuge and 20,000 off-site acres, including Westminster, from Superfund with risk-based public access. There's no such word in the lexicon of Circula as "safe." It's U-U-U-E, unlimited use, unrestricted exposure. Rocky Flats operations contaminated drinking water at Great Western Reservoir and Stanley Lake. Unfortunately, government actors claim that the refuge is safe. In May of 2016, DOE settled with the Cook plaintiffs for $375 million. In January of 2019, the Department of Energy finally announced the presence of Colorado regulated PFAS constituents at Rocky Flats. Dr. Ketterer and I took samples at Walnut Creek in Indiana, and we found presence of PFOA and PFOS, which are regulated constituents by the state of Colorado. The Department of Energy disclosed through nuclear workers had been milling, manufacturing with neptunium 237 back in the '60s through the '80s. That information was not passed on as required under the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act. Therefore, the Department of Energy has not been sampling for neptunium. The state of Colorado and EPA weren't... The state of Colorado and EPA weren't aware that that was feedstock in their manufacturing. The issue I've got, my personal perspective, and I've read a lot of material from the Department of Energy, and I sent all of you my position paper on Friday. I appreciate it if you could read it. One of the things I cite is the two thousand and six Comprehensive Risk Analysis for the Rocky Flats. That is an important document. That document is basically the basis for why it is and is not risk-based, why the confusion over Rocky Flats being safe, and it's not. But let me just kind of paint a picture. So, this CRA, or Comprehensive Risk Analysis, excludes millions of data points, and they're important. So, from nineteen fifty-two to nineteen ninety-one, exactly June twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-one, all of those radioactive and commercial hazardous waste data points were excluded, which to me is ludicrous. That includes my environmental samples that I seized at Rocky Flats and other undocumented contamination. So, I think it's skewed in favor of the, what the government calls an accelerated cleanup. It gives a false sense of belief that Rocky Flats is safe. But I submit that if all of the millions of data points, when, I mean, I'm talking about the fifty-seven fire, the nineteen sixty-nine fire, all of that was added to the CRA, Comprehensive Risk Analysis, and therefore submitted through the computer modeling called the residual radiation, or RESRAD, that comprises this fifty picocuries per gram safety limit, I think we'd find that Rocky Flats is not as safe as the government purports it to be. And with that, I yield to Dr. Michael Ketter.
Thank you, and good evening. There we go. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors. My name is Michael Ketter. I live in Longmont. I'm retired, sort of. I am what's called a professor of narratives of chemistry and biochemistry at Northern Arizona University. I moved here in twenty thirteen from Arizona. And quickly, everybody started asking me questions about Rocky Flats because my research background was in studying plutonium in the environment, and it still is. And the burning question is always, well, is this stuff blowing around in the air? And I have been following that lingering burning question for several years. And I'm here to say today, the answer is yes, of course it blows in the air when the wind blows under high episodic wind conditions. But I'm using the word here "flux" because I want to say, what we really need to do is we need to understand how much. Is this a problem or not? And I don't really have a good answer for that, other than I can say it does occur. So, this is kind of a narrative summary of my work. John and I went to the proximity of Rocky Flats on April sixth. If you all remember that particular day as a really, really severe windstorm, the windstorm of the year. We were out there that afternoon on Indiana, sampling right in the proximity of the most contaminated downwind area of the site, in the area of the former east gate to the weapons plant, the plutonium fabrication facility, and near the southeast gate to the refuge. We were in those areas. And we use portable monitoring equipment. This is constructed at home. It's about a hundred and fifty bucks. The blower is from Harbor Freight, and it uses a furnace filter to catch the particles. So, it's pretty simple stuff. This is a very short period of time that the sampler was run, about twenty minutes. And I'm using what's called mass spectrometry, which counts atoms and measures how many. I use mass spectrometry to find that the plutonium is there to measure how much. And plutonium is indeed found. Two samples taken along Indiana on April sixth, plutonium is detected in those two samples. A third sample was collected along Highway one twenty-eight, near Rock Creek, where the air mass was coming from points north and west of that location. So, in other words, not affected by the central operating unit. But our samples were in place that they were being directly affected by the contaminated soil in the central operating unit. Here's some pictures of the, one of the actual filters that's collected. That's about a seven-inch circle there, that's twenty minutes, and that's what you're getting on the filter. Logically, one should not be out there under these kinds of wind conditions, directly downwind of the refuge. But that's what's in the air. Where we were approximately where that filter was taken, if you look at the map to the left, that's the so-called Cray-Harty map. That's the government's map from the nineteen seventies. And the most olive-colored region of it, that's right about where the air filter sample is taken. That's among some of the highest contours of plutonium activity. So, I put this letter here on the right to show that the Mayor Broomfield, Castriotta, asked the Department of Energy to conduct this same type of testing that I've done, and they refused. A lot of times when I've generated results that people don't like, they challenge my analytical results. I'm trying to cut that off at the pass and say, here, if you don't believe me, the photo on the left is the ion count data from the mass spectrometer right there. Our Department of Energy friends can look at that, and Los Alamos National Laboratory uses the exact same instrument as this, and that individual would say, yes, I'm detecting plutonium here. So, I'm focusing your attention on the yellow column there. Those are the ion counts for plutonium two thirty-nine. The first set of numbers there, that's the sample from Rock Creek. That's a zero, that is a non-detect. The next three sets of readings there are detected samples. Those are from along Indiana. And furthermore, the first one there on the list, which is from the former east gate of the plutonium weapons plant, that one has sufficiently high levels in it. I can measure the ratio between two forty and two thirty-nine, and I can say, this is from Rocky Flats. It's from Rocky Flats, it is not from anywhere else in the world, it is from there. This is a fingerprint of where it came from. So, that is, that is true. I want to tell you, councilors and Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem, that none of this should be any surprise. This is, what happens? There's contaminated soil there, the wind blows. This is the logical following from that. This should not be any surprise. I've measured the concentrations or activities of plutonium in the material itself, I've been able to weigh it, and you can see the numbers are, some would say, well, it's way less than fifty picocuries per gram, and that is true. I would say this, though. The state of Colorado put in a standard colloquially called the State Construction Standard of two decompositions per minute per gram, and that's about zero point eight eight picocuries per gram. And this is actually a state statute that Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment stated they would not enforce. They deferred to fifty picocuries per gram. But this was promulgated by the state back in the day, following much of the initial public disclosure about Rocky Flats. Out of an abundance of caution, they put in this state construction standard. Some of these numbers are higher, well, the first one on the list is higher than that. So, here's kind of a cartoon model of what is happening. I was gonna draw a sketch, I'm terrible at drawing, so this is, this is what we get. We're looking at an episodic wind event blowing down from the Continental Divide, crossing these contaminated soils, and let's imagine along Indiana Street, what we were seeing there on that day was horizontal movement of dust in the soil in a strip that I'd say was mostly two to three meters off the ground, you know, a few feet. Not, not, it's pretty close to the ground. And there's probably about two thousand meters, two kilometers, you know, a mile, a little bit more than a mile between the north end and the south end of where this contaminated zone is. So, what I want to know is what, how much stuff is coming, under what conditions? What is the flux to these receptors? And the receptors are the properties that your city owns and that Westminster, that the city of Broomfield owns, and who knows how else. During the time that we were there, the wind was blowing pretty much straight from the west. So, it was going right over to Broomfield from the Central Operating Unit. So, I have a very crude estimate. It's probably an order of magnitude or so, but I'm gonna say that on a wind event, from my data, something like a few hundred kilograms of contaminated soil are moving, and it contains some number of micrograms of plutonium. How much? Well, I can't really say better than that. This is a thimbleful into a whole ocean extrapolation. And the best I can say is, I think we need to have a better handle on what this flux is. This is what the Department of Energy did not want to do, and it said they didn't want to do it. And I propose that it needs to be done by other parties. Councilors and Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, I think the worst thing that could be done would be to cause soil disturbances on the refuge. Because what's then gonna happen is the more you disturb that soil, the more you're gonna break up the crust of biota, algae, the microbiotic crust on the top of the soil. You're gonna break that up, and that soil's gonna go into suspension. The more people walk on that, the more developed, the greater the flux is gonna be. There's more contamination coming your way, the more people walk on it. That's, I will pass over to my colleague, Dr. Segalov. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Segalov. I'm a Boulder County resident, I live in Niwot. I'm a biomedical research scientist, and I'm speaking today as an individual, as well as on behalf of PSR Colorado, the Colorado Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility, where I'm on the Board of Directors. As a brief background, I have a PhD in biochemistry from Vanderbilt University, and until retirement in two thousand and eighteen, I was a professor of molecular physiology and biophysics at the University of Iowa Carver College of Medicine. The focus of my research over the, all those years, which was funded continuously by grants from the National Institutes of Health, was cellular signaling and the endocrinology of the reproductive system. Because cellular signaling is integral to cancer initiation and growth, I also held a faculty position at our medical school's cancer center. I had funding from the American Cancer Society, and for several years, I was on a national review panel that critiqued grant applications coming in to a cancer research foundation. Importantly, throughout my scientific career, my laboratory routinely used various radioactive compounds. This was done following strict but reasonable federal and state safety guidelines. And therefore, I'm in no way unreasonably fearful of radioactivity. As you know, for many years, Rocky Flats produced plutonium triggers for atomic weapons. The Central Operating Unit is now a Superfund site. The surrounding buffer zone is now the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge. The soil of the Superfund site, which was minimally cleaned up, and the soil of the surrounding Wildlife Refuge, which was never cleaned up, remain heavily contaminated with plutonium. The resulting risks to public health form the basis for serious concerns regarding the construction of the Rocky Mountain Greenway. The focus of my presentation today is twofold. One, the dangers posed by plutonium. And two, why construction of the Greenway poses a risk to public health. So, why is plutonium dangerous? One, plutonium emits long-lived alpha radiation. Alpha radiation is a particularly strong form of ionizing radiation, and the damage it causes in irradiating cells is far more severe than that of other forms of radiation. Its damage results in frequent breaks in the double-stranded DNA. Now, damaged DNA can be repaired by cells, but this process can lead to errors, i.e. mutations, within the coding DNA sequence. If mutations occur in one or more genes that cause uncontrolled cell multiplication, this will initiate and sustain cancer growth. Unfortunately, the resulting cancers may not be detectable for years, sometimes even decades, after the exposure that led to the uptake of a plutonium particle into one's body. Two, plutonium two thirty-nine has a half-life of twenty-four thousand, one hundred years. What does that mean? It means it takes over twenty-four thousand years for a given plutonium particle to lose only one half of its radioactive energy, and then another twenty-four thousand years to lose another one half of the remaining radioactivity, et cetera. So, it is ten, emits for tens of thousands of years. Three, plutonium, if taken up, remains in the body for the person's lifetime. Alpha radiation travels a very short distance, and if outside of the body, it actually lacks the energy to penetrate the skin, and it's not a danger. The primary route by which the body can take up plutonium, though, is by inhalation. I want to quote to you a statement made by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. "Breathing plutonium-contaminated air is the most dangerous way to be exposed to plutonium. If you know or suspect that plutonium has been released to the air, you should leave the area immediately." And I ask that you please keep that comment in mind as you think about and discuss the refuge and the Greenway. Continuing, inhaled plutonium generally remains in the lungs, but it can get into the bloodstream and deposit it elsewhere in your body, typically but not exclusively in bone and liver. Importantly, plutonium is not eliminated by the body. Once it's deposited, it remains there for the person's lifetime, continuously emitting dangerous alpha radiation for the person's lifetime and well beyond. Now, imagine if you were advised to get an X-ray of your lungs every hour on the hour for the rest of your life. You would understandably be very worried about developing cancer. But now, think about plutonium, which would be emitting a far more dangerous form of radiation, and would be doing so constantly, continuously, for the rest of your life. Four, all it takes is one particle of plutonium. Because inhaled plutonium remains in one's body for their lifetime, continuously emitting dangerous alpha radiation, the inhalation of a single particle of plutonium poses a health hazard. Most of the soil samples taken from the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge, especially in that wind-blown area to the east or just outside of the eastern side of the refuge, have been shown to contain levels of plutonium that are higher than the background levels remaining from fallout of atmospheric testing of atomic weapons. But I'm not implying that that background level even is safe. This suggests a pervasive, not sporadic, contamination of the refuge with plutonium. Consequently, disruption of the surface soil by wind and/or recreation is likely to cause plutonium-contaminated dust that could be inhaled. Five, there is a difficulty in detecting plutonium. You can't easily measure plutonium in soil and air. It requires the analysis of samples with sophisticated methodologies. And if you're concerned that you may have inhaled plutonium, there is actually no way to actually ascertain whether that's occurred or not. An additional note that I'd like to make this evening is that plutonium is not the only carcinogen that's been documented, documented to be present in the soil on the refuge. There are other radionuclides that emit alpha radiation, known to be uranium two thirty-three, two thirty-four, and amareum two forty-one, and most likely neptunium two thirty-seven. There are also non-radiactive carcinogens, including arsenic, chromium, and benzoapyrene. Why construction and use of the Rocky Mountain Greenway is a threat to public health? Installation of the overpass would greatly disturb soil on the wind-blown area of the refuge, including soil many feet below. refuge, including soil many feet below the surface, which may be more heavily contaminated than the surface soil. Secondly, as was noted by Dr. Ketterer, the Greenway would encourage greater use on the trails of the refuge, disturbing the surface soil and potentially generating contaminated airborne dust. And thirdly, the Greenway would open the gates to tracking plutonium and other carcinogens far outside the refuge, including into the Rocky Mountain National Park, where unsuspecting men, women, and children could be put at risk. In closing, for those reasons, I and PSR Colorado urge you to withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway project. And we ask you to please consider what side of history you want to be on in the future. And I thank you for your consideration of this matter. Good night.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Dr. Sasha Stiles. And I may be the only one speaking who is a trained physician here. And I am probably the only one who works directly with patients on a daily basis. So I speak to you from that point of view. I've heard what the other speakers have said and will say. And I must emphatically agree. I'll try to keep my knowledge to the knowledge base that is uniquely mine. And just to let you know, I graduated cum laude from UCLA in ethnomusicology, probably the only one here that did that. I was given my first job in healthcare by a boss who was looking for someone who could talk easily to people and could make them feel comfortable and could make them feel that I cared. I developed an innovative healthcare plan for children of UCLA students with direct patient experience. I completed my pre-med science courses from Stanford University while developing another consumer-owned healthcare delivery system. Finally, I earned my MD at UC California in San Francisco, received a master's in public health from the University of California, Berkeley in epidemiology and environmental health. I completed board certifications in two subspecialties. I practiced medicine first on the island of Kuaia, greeting indigenous peoples, then Honolulu in San Francisco. Later, I joined the clinical faculty at Tufts and then NYU Langue Medical Center. Please note, there was no one that I'm aware of on CD-PHE involved in the oversight of Rocky Flats with the experience of caring for people or even holding a master's degree in public health. I say this because one of my first brushes with CD-PHE still alarms me. Lindsay Masters gave a lecture to the stewardship councils about Rocky Flats, and her topic was headed myths and misunderstandings of Rocky Flats. I sat in the audience during the presentation, among people who actually had worked there and who had severe disabilities. They may not have spoken eloquently if given a chance, but they were demeaned and they were disgusted by this brash and inaccurate handling of their own experience. So forgive me if I speak now for them, not just as an advocate, but as a clinician who knows medicine. No caring doctor I know would ever give a lecture to these people called myths and misunderstandings. Let me make that crystal clear. Upon moving to Superior, Sandy Pennington, a trustee for Superior at that time, took my husband and I to a sharing session by the Department of Energy subsidiary, the Fish and Wildlife Department, concerned planning a wildlife refuge trail system on the buffer zone. I knew enough about plutonium from my medical training to be shocked about anyone wanting to walk on the buffer zone. Having asked several questions, I was escorted out by an armed sheriff. As I walked outside, an FBI agent, John Lipsky, approached me and in a very low voice, probably sounding like me right now, "Doctor, would you accept this gift?" And it was the ambush grand jury. And let's see, where do I? Okay, not, that's me. There it is. That's the book, first book I read. I recommend you all read that. Then, let's see, moving on, I've worked at Rocky Flats Downwinders on the advisory board. I did a lot of work, but there's two things I wanted to speak to you about that are uniquely mine, which is my work with patients. First, I want to tell you about my work with plutonium. That is also what Dr. Segalov was talking about. It is very hard to detect plutonium in tissue. It may be in all of us, we don't know, but it's really hard to detect. I can't do a blood test or a urine test accurately to tell you whether you've been affected. Suffice it to say, we finally got tissue from several people who had, families had given tissue to us, who had died and asked us to try to find plutonium in these tissues. We took, Deborah and I actually wrote a grant and took it to DU where Michael and I were on the faculty adjunct faculty at that time, asking them to approve our grant. They really didn't want to see plutonium on their campus. The point of that is, I understand that, but it is very difficult to prove that there's plutonium in the tissue. And if we look at what Deborah was saying about what happens to our genetic makeup, may I say that what fears me more than anything is that we can change the on-and-off circuitry to our genomes itself, but what happens if the on-off circuitry that transforms the genetic material is in our testes or our ovaries? And it's not transmitted to us, it's transmitted to our children or our children's children. I'm not saying it very well because I'm not a bench scientist or an epigeneticist, but I will tell you that that is a grave concern to anyone who understands what we're talking about probably better than me. And the second thing, the other thing is about that, we know that from radiation, we hear that if you have a severe dose of radiation like at Chernobyl, something like that, that you will die immediately or soon thereafter from a horrible death. That didn't happen to very many people around here. I know that. But how do you determine what the load is of plutonium on people who kept getting it episodically? I don't know. And it's, but the first thing I do know is that if you ask the scientists who spoke to us at a Rocky Flats PSR conference who grew up near Chernobyl, they would tell you that their families who survived are still affected. They would tell you that the worst people affected are the children, because the children will eat the contaminated food that grew the next season, and they were the most affected of all of them. The second way I want to evaluate health concern at front range is by direct patient care, one patient at a time. It's where I feel more comfortable. I'm a medical consultant for Atomic Worker Advocacy, an organization that reviews medical records from Rocky Flats and other nuclear weapons plants and helps them get financial remuneration for their many devastating illnesses from the Department of Labor. I have reviewed hundreds of cases of Rocky Flats workers. Now plutonium may indeed be a real killer, but as you know now, it's really hard to prove unless you die immediately in a nuclear disaster. Reviewing just one job category, say you have a welder at Rocky Flats, entails toxic exposure to way over 100 chemicals that are known to cause cancer, lung disease, hearing loss, vision loss, chronic immune disorders, and more in one's own lifetime. We learned at the PSR conference from Ted Segler, the trustee from the Steel Workers' Union at Rocky Flats, that the entire plant was laced with a fine dust knee-high and that most workers were not offered protective gear. They took their gear home to wash, thus contaminating their families and the water supply. If people did work in the plutonium hot areas, I will tell you their general protection was grossly lacking. Having read their records, many of them myself, as I'm aghast at how they were not as protected as they needed to be. Here is the medical history I heard over and over. Initially, most people complained to the infirmary of seasonal allergies, soon became year-round. Then they took allergy shots, which didn't work. Then they had nosebleeds, sinus infections, headaches, coughed, and later shortness of breath burst with exertion, and later with any activity. Much, much later, we get their records after they've left the flats. We saw lung cancer, blood cancers, brain cancer. These are people living in our communities, just to name a few. Too often, we saw that breathing tests, that breathing was slowly, breathing was slowly getting worse as people just sort of stopped living. They might get treated for pneumonia, and this is really important. They might get treated for pneumonia. And the antibiotics would help a little bit, but the coughs never really improved. If they were lucky, if they were lucky, someone would look at the X-ray and suspect a cancer, especially if pneumonia was in the upper parts of the lungs. Way too often, they did not look, they did not feel it was a cancer, and it was not found until just a while later, when the cancer had spread to other organs or maybe caused a metastatic brain bleed, now too late to really be saved. These are the stories I hear day in, day out. This is what I want you to know that we are up against. I heard variations of this story many times, just being a laundry worker who picked up laundry, or a secretary who wandered through the plutonium silica lead, asbestos dust, turns up incurable disease, COPD in nonsmokers, asthma, pulmonary fibrosis, little-known cancer. Was there causation? After reviewing so many patient records and listening to the stories, it is clear to me. Last word on neighborhood groups. There is one very vocal group who will tell you with physics and mathematical calculations that there is no harm. My neighbor in Superior grew up in another neighborhood, Arvada, and keeps in touch with his graduating class from Arvada High. He tells me of the many friends he has lost to cancer already. His parents died of bone and lymphatic cancer early and no prior risk factors except living in Arvada. Please see that this is not just about dying workers, it is what plutonium can do to the rest of us. Now back to my own neighborhood, I have recently been diagnosed with colon cancer. And my same neighbor wonders if he might develop cancer himself because he lived in Arvada, and worries more that he might have passed it on to his children. What would you tell him? What can you do to protect their future? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Derigo. I'm the Radioactive Waste Project Director at Nuclear Information and Resource Service. It's a national organization that tracks nuclear power, nuclear waste, radiation issues. My degrees are in chemistry and environmental studies, and I have worked in research, analytical chemistry, environmental biochemistry labs. And I did take the Department of Energy RESRAD training. In my capacity at Nuclear Information and Resource Service, I have challenged federal radiation standards and orders for agencies which were trying to increase the allowable risk to the public. I've taken on the National Academy of Science panels, which were supposed to be evaluating the updated effects of radiation on human health by pointing out that the members of some of these panels were very skewed toward trying to increase allowable radioactivity, to give recommendations for less protection. And finally, I've worked with some communities who have had contamination and using computer models and codes were told they were clean, only to later find out once, and a couple cases twice, that they weren't and they had to clean them up again. The question before you today is whether to proceed with this plan for the bridge. I think an important point is that legal levels of radioactive exposure, of radioactive amounts of contamination, are not necessarily safe levels. The radiation protection standards of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, the Department of Energy, the Environmental Protection Agency, the international, the inter-agency committee on radiation standards, of course, these standards are based on the amounts of radioactivity that the industries need in order to continue to operate or to allow closure and cleanup of the facilities. They are not based on what are the effects on people. And I can give one example of that. When the Nuclear Regulatory Commission was updating its radiation protection standards, took them from '86 to '92 to do it, it was at a time when one of the National Academy's studies came out showing that the risk of radiation was really higher than previously known. Despite that information from the National Academy, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission changed the standards so that for over two-thirds of the radionuclides listed, the allowable concentrations in air and water for workers and the public went up. They raised the allowable amounts of radioactivity at a time when we were learning from the National Academy that radiation is more harmful. So this is an indication that standards are not designed to protect people. They are, in fact, why this was being done by the NRC at that time was because a lot of nuclear facilities were starting to close and it was needed to make decommissioning more economic. The RESRAD code is one of many types of, many codes used to project the doses to people from a set amount of radioactivity that's being left. I first encountered it when there was an effort to deregulate radioactive waste, to treat it as if it's regular garbage or recycle it into consumer products. And the RESRAD recycle code was used to claim that with this amount of contamination, say in this metal, that the consumer products that were made by this radioactively recycled metal would be a low enough dose that it's acceptable to the public. In the United States, the steel industry was very much opposed to having their metal be contaminated, and they had a zero tolerance policy. The Department of Energy, which was responsible for developing the RESRAD residual radioactivity code, they went to Stutzvik, a metal recycler in Sweden that was at that time taking decommissioned reactors from East Germany after the wall had fallen and recycling that. And they claimed to have validated and verified the RESRAD code by looking at the amount of radioactivity that was going into the facility and coming out of the facility. But there is no way to know how much exposure people ever got. There's, they claim that they're validating and verifying the code, but there's no way to say, oh, look, you got two REMs or two Seberts or whatever the amount is, because it's not, it's a calculation. And so all we're doing is looking at calculations that are being verified by other calculations. The RESRAD code was created by DOE, the Department of Energy, for the Department of Energy, and the Nuclear Regulatory Commission uses it with the commercial nuclear reactors that it licenses. It is a combination of hundreds of equations and assumptions that are, as I said, designed to predict the dose to people in the future from radioactivity today. The purpose is to estimate and to justify radioactive releases and contamination. The validation and verification of the code that I have reviewed is not convincing. There, in what I learned about the code is that there are many opportunities for updating, for making it more specific. You can change the assumptions and the inputs into the code. Well, even a very small change in an input can give an orders of magnitude difference in the dose that is projected. So it's very difficult, if you're trying to look at a code that's been run and say, oh, look, this is, here's where the problem is, because there are so many places that the tweaking could have occurred. The other problem is, this is a federally funded code that was developed, and the basic underlying equations are secret. They've still not, to my understanding, been revealed. And so if scientists wanted to go in and verify some of these equations, they would not be able to. Also, the RESRAD code, as I said, there are other codes that are out there, but this is one that's really pushed. It generally allows two to three times more contamination than the Environmental Protection Agency's PRG calculator. So the medical impacts of ionizing radiation, you heard from the speakers before me, but in general, breaks the bonds in our, injures our cells, it injures our genetic material. There's the chromosomes that can be damaged. The health effects, when the computer codes, I'm sorry, when the standards, the allowable... The health effects, when the computer codes, I'm sorry, when the standards, the allowable release levels, contamination levels, by the different agencies are developed, they only are based on cancer. They are not based on other health effects, which we know, there can be heart disease, there can be reduced immunity and greater susceptibility to other diseases, genetic damage. They do, in some of the situations, look at the first two generations for genetic damage, but not beyond that. Birth defects, heart disease, and other health problems in this and future generations. So what I'm saying is, when we said that this is an acceptable, however many picos per liter, pico curius per liter, it may be acceptable from a cancer risk, but it's not necessarily going to protect from all of the other health effects. And just a chart of where different radionuclides concentrate in the body, they mimic nutrients. So cobalt goes where B6 goes, calcium goes, strontium goes where calcium would go in the body, and plutonium goes to the lungs, to the reproductive organs, so that it's difficult to know what radionuclides are where, but they do concentrate in these different organs. And so the National Academy of Sciences, as I said, does periodically review the biological effects of ionizing radiation, and in the last report that was done in VR7, what was shown, which was not expounded on in the text, is that radiation gives much higher risk, the same amount of dose given to a man, a woman, or children, that men are harmed, but women are harmed even more than that. For every two men that get cancer, three women get cancer at the same dose. And for children, for every little boy that gets cancer, four, two little girls get cancer, so one to two, and little girls get cancer seven times more than the man, the standard So the protections that are being devised, were developed for standard man, so kids, women are at higher risk from, you know, when we're hearing that these are allowable or acceptable risks. And of course, we're going to have kids and women and men all biking and hiking on these trails if they're opened up. And of course, that's who lives downwind here. So there are arguments in favor of the project, there are arguments against the project. I believe that spreading plutonium, relying on models that are not designed to protect us and that have flaws and can be changed to help the person who's filling out, filling out, carrying out the code, our problems, that RESRAD underestimates the risks, and that it's not comfortable really to spread contamination to people who are unsuspecting. My conclusions, radiation causes cancer and other health effects, the risks are greater for some parts of our human reproductive cycle. So it's not just women and men, a subpopulation, but all future men are going to come from women. So it's part of the whole human reproductive cycle. Computer codes and models that are being relied upon are not, I got it, are not fully reliable, and I'm asking you to use your power to prevent future spread of radioactivity.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Honorable Counselors. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you tonight. My name is Randy Stafford. I'm a resident of Jefferson County, and I will summarize our group's arguments against the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail crossing into the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. As has been amply demonstrated, Rocky Flats specific weapons grade plutonium two thirty-nine, two forty is in the soil and even in the wind. Inhaled plutonium is highly carcinogenic. Standard setting, as Diane described, is not necessarily based primarily on protecting human health. And the output of RESRAD, the modeling and estimation software that is the basis for all of the safety assertions around Rocky Flats, is pretty easily contradicted by empirical evidence in the community. So we believe that putting the Greenway Trail through Rocky Flats is morally irresponsible. And we'd ask that you would consider, why would you do this, and that you would please withdraw your support for this project. And I'll go into these one by one. Two thousand nineteen saw four different soil sampling efforts. It was the first time in a while that soil had been sampled at Rocky Flats. There was sampling conducted for the Greenway Trail crossings, there was sampling conducted for the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority, and I was a member of the Jefferson Parkway Advisory Committee, and I did extensive research into past studies of soil contamination off-site and past epidemiological studies of the downwind population for that committee. And that, those findings became the basis of my chapter in Kristen Iverson's second book about Rocky Flats doomed with a view. I believe I gave every one of you a copy of that book in an earlier meeting this year. Anyway, I like to think of soil contamination in terms of multiples of background radiation. So in the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, there were atmospheric nuclear weapons tests by multiple countries. Those tests caused plutonium to settle all over the world. So even if Rocky Flats never existed, there would be plutonium in the soil. That is called background radiation. And the number that I prefer to use for background radiation is zero point zero four three four disintegrations per minute, per gram of soil. Obviously, there's all these esoteric units that you never hear of before. That's why I like to think in terms of multiples of background radiation. The particle that Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority found was thirteen thousand five hundred times background radiation. The particle that Engineering Analytics found on Westminster land for the Greenway crossings was nine hundred and ninety-two times background radiation. So fifty years after the nine oh three area was cleaned up, and fifty years after the nineteen sixty-nine fire that kind of blew the lid off everything, there's obviously still tremendous plutonium contamination in the Indiana Street quarter, right where the Greenway Crossing would go, over Indiana. And as Dr. Ketterer pointed out, Rocky Flats is obviously a windy place. This picture was taken on July fourth, twenty eighteen, by young men named Drake Panzer, I'll come back to him. Winds that day were about twenty-five miles an hour. That Dust Devil is on the central, the central operable unit, the Superfund Site. This is what the Greenway Trail would encourage people to hike in. Hike and bike and ride horses in a known windy, dusty environment where the dust, the airborne dust contains plutonium. Why would you do this? Okay, so Dr. Ketterer already talked about his sampling, but one point I'd like to add is, kind of like thinking about multiples of background radiation, I like to think about how many individual plutonium atoms did he capture? And I asked him this question. And he estimates that he captured tens to hundreds of billions of individual plutonium atoms in just a seven-inch disk of filter material in just twenty minutes, on just one day. And meanwhile, this, this stuff is blowing all the time, every time there's a big windstorm. And it's blowing across a mile of Indiana Street, a few meters high. It's, the number of atoms that are blowing across there is practically uncountable. So one of the, one of the points of debate is, you know, can one plutonium particle cause, can one inhaled plutonium particle cause a cancer? If you, so CDPHD says that respirable-sized plutonium particles are three to ten microns in size, that's one twentieth of the width of a human hair. So I calculated that if you inhaled a three-micron plutonium particle, it would have one point three four trillion atoms, and there would be a decay more than every second in your body. So some unlucky cell in your lung would receive a little tiny dose of radiation more than every second. If you inhaled a ten-micron particle, it would have forty-six, it'd have fifty trillion atoms, and it would emit alpha particles forty-six times per second in your body, wherever it ended up, destroying DNA in that part of the body. Dr. Carl Johnson was the Director of Jefferson County Public Health Department, and he testified under oath in a previous trial about Rocky Flats that he did not want to put people in the downwind area because it's contaminated, and he believed it would significantly increase their risks of leukemia, cancer, birth defects, and general ill health. The soil action level determination process is pretty well documented in a book called Plutonium and People Don't Mix by Dr. Leroy Moore. This fifty pico curi per gram action level for the Rocky Flats cleanup was basically reverse engineered from the cleanup budget. The DOE wanted a level that would allow a certain dose per year to a certain receptor, and fifty pico curius per gram was the number that ultimately came out. They initially wanted it to be six hundred and fifty-one pico curius per gram, and there was public outrage and some back and forth. The DOE had working groups and oversight panels that it had established to help determine the action level. It ultimately ignored their recommendations and established fifty pico curius per gram. And importantly, none of the safety determinations were based on consideration of downwind residents of major construction projects at the site, like the Jefferson Parkway, like the Greenway crossings, or any other soil disturbance there. So RESRAD predicted that there would be two excess cancer cases in one hundred thousand receptors using the Wildlife Refuge Worker as the receptor under some assumptions. And CDPHD did another RESRAD run for the Parkway construction, and they concluded that the radiation dose to a off-site resident farmer would be one point nine seven seven millirems per year. They didn't even translate that to an excess cancer risk because there's a regulatory limit of twenty-five millirems a year being acceptable, so they stopped their analysis there. Meanwhile, there have been empirical evidence from the community, the Metropolitan State University Health Survey, which found we have twice the rate of rare cancers around here than nationally, and thyroid cancer is the second most prevalent around here. The thyroid is a radio-sensitive organ, whereas ninth, nationally, it's ninth in prevalence. And they geoplaned these cases, and they correlate well with the smoke plume from the nineteen fifty-seven fire and the Cray Hardy map. There's a young woman named Brittany Kelly who monitors young breast cancer in Colorado, and there is quite obviously a cancer cluster in the Stanley Lake area in her findings. There's also empirical evidence of disease incidence in downwind neighborhoods. Two cases of cardiac angiosarcoma in Five Parks. Five, I'm sorry, three men in their forties passed away from various abdominal cancers in Five Parks, and none of this is predicted by RESRAD. So this empirical evidence invalidates the output of RESRAD. I also think Matt Jones' comments were really important when he was casting a no vote on one of the IGAs for the FLAT grant. He casted a no vote because he has doubts about the safety of the site. He himself is a double cancer survivor, and this is recorded, and his remarks are very powerful. I did a poll of Rocky Flats workers. Eighty percent of them say that there should absolutely not be recreation in the former buffer zone, especially the wind-blown area exposure unit. And my uncle was the manager of the only precedent for what's happening at Rocky Flats, the Alaska Maritime National Wildlife Refuge, and this is his opinion. It's like a playground on an old dump. It should be fenced and patrolled. So my question to you is, do you want it to be your legacy to have voted for a project that would encourage people to go recreate on plutonium-contaminated site? Thank you very much for your, for your attention this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you to everybody on the panel who provided your testimony and for your information. And I think if, I'm just going to check with the council, are you needing a quick five-minute break to get glasses or whatever you do? Yes. Okay, for those online, we're, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we're going to switch. We will be asking questions, so we do hope that you will stick around, but we do want to hear the second part of this so that we can have better questions. Thank you. Thank you.
This data set is not known even to the DOE. But it's very important because it gives a detailed look at plutonium soil radioactivity in its natural context. There are two, as you can see, no, you may not be able to see them, but uh. There are three basic chunks of this uh ra- radioactivity diagram. One comes from, there are two natural radioisotope decay chains on Earth. One from uranium two thirty-eight, the other from thorium two thirty-two, each with many decayed daughters. Potassium forty is the other source. There they are, the big three. Uh, at the very top of this diagram are non-natural isotopes uh on rocky flats. Plutonium from the plant and fallout. You'll notice that they can barely be distinguished from each other because they are very, very small slices. Plutonium two thirty-nine and two forty contribute about zero point eight percent of the total. This very strongly constrains the radiation dose it can deliver. The total soil radioactivity from the NIST data agrees to within four percent of the DOE data for the Refuge and the Central Operable Unit. As you already know, uh, thanks to Dr. Segaloff, alpha particles from plutonium are very ionizing. Stopped by a sheet of paper, but can be dangerous if soil particles are lodged in the lungs. This is exactly as true of other natural alpha emitters as it is of plutonium. The NIST data shows that ninety-eight percent of alpha radiation comes from the natural radioisotopes. The DOE figure is ninety-nine point four percent. Uh, this is an absolute showstopper legally if you try to blame plutonium for health problems. If it contributes less than one percent of the total amount of uh alpha radiation. Well, the next question you might plausibly ask is uh. Is it possible that plutonium uh is punching above its weight in terms of radiation dose? We just saw that plutonium contributes about point eight percent of total soil radioactivity according to NIST. Is there something peculiar about plutonium? No, not at all. Uh, quick reminder, radioactivity is measured in decays per second. Radiation dose, which is the energy delivered to tissue, determines the health impact and is due to what comes out of the decay. Gamma rays, uh, alpha particles, beta particles. First, in terms of the dose, you can see that the vertical bar chart of red lines are a bunch of adjacent, very similar natural radioisotopes that are alpha emitters. One of those lines is plutonium. It doesn't matter very much which one is, I think it's the second one from the right. Uh, so, and you'll notice there are contributions from gamma rays as well. High-energy alphas lose all of their energy in the thickness of a sheet of paper. Lower-energy gamma rays can go through inches of re- of uh of lead. Gamma rays turn out to be responsible for ninety-six percent of the total radiation dose because they expose the entire body at once since they're very penetrating. Notice that this is a logarithmic scale, although you might not be able to see it. So I'll read it for you. Plutonium contributes fifteen thousand times less than typical radioisotopes to the dominant gamma ray source. So, based on simply measurements, nuclear tables, which have been known for decades, and measurements of soil directly by NIST, uh, show that without calculating the dose yet, we expect plutonium to contribute considerably less than one percent of the total radiation dose. That's incredibly important. That's directly on, now I'm gonna skip one. How am I doing? Am I doing a magnificently? Well, you'll see. Um, this is, simply touches base with twenty nineteen uh soil standard samp- soil sampling that you already know about. Uh, the bottom middle figure shows the contribution of hot particles detected by Dr. Ketterer in twenty nineteen. He found nine, he did careful measurements on nine places and uh looked every, looked at throughout that region. They contribute less than point five picocuries per gram, which is a minor contribution on the east side of the refuge. Uh, I'm gonna jump directly into radiation doses, something you never hear about from the other side. I used Resrad, yes, I did, and I turned off all the things that made it anything other than a radiation calculator. I plugged in all of the NIST radioisotopes as measured. Uh, but picked levels of plutonium and americium higher than expected. I picked them high enough that ninety percent of all samples during the Jefferson Parkway sampling had lower values, and I included point five picocuries per gram for hot particles, even though they may not be present everywhere. These are close to the highest values that Ketterer measured in his uh May air filter measurements. The bottom left pie chart shows the radiation dose contributed by each of the radioisotopes in the NIST data that I showed you earlier, the radioactivity pie chart. I, in a table here, just for your convenience, is summarized a bunch of important dose aspects of plutonium in rocky flat soil. Plutonium contributes around four hundred and twenty times less dose than the total measured natural background soil dose. We expected less than point eight percent based on the nuclear data. Uh, natural soil radiation contributes a lifetime risk of soil mortality. I'll say, I'll read that again. Natural soil radiation contributes a lifetime risk of cancer mortality eight hundred times larger than does plutonium. You can calculate your own favorite annual dose based on the little insert here, which is taken directly from the International uh Committee on Radiological Protection. Uh, as I mentioned before, uh, these include, of course, inhaled radiation dose. It has been assumed since pre-cleanup that all the radiation dose you get from plutonium is either inhaled or swallowed. This is nothing new. To find it in the air, it would be stunning if it were not present. Uh, the right pie chart shows the complete radiation dose picture for an individual living on the rocky, living on rocky flats. It shows the contribution to the total annual dose for someone spending a hundred percent of his or her time on the eastern boundary of the refuge in a house with no radon mitigation exposed to unshielded background. Plutonium contributes about twelve thousand times less than the annual dose. Okay, I will let you look at that, but there's no compelling reason to look at that. Unless you like it.
Members of the council, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Um, Jason Andrews with Engineering Analytics. I will present this evening the results of the sampling that we completed. So a little background on the areas that we sampled. You'll see in the light blue at the north end of Colorado one twenty-eight, and then in the bottom right, along Indiana Street. Uh, there were two structures planned, one to, along Indiana Street has been, has already been presented. There's an overpass structure proposed there, and then along Colorado one twenty-eight, there's a proposed underpass uh to access uh the proposed um Rocky Mountain Flats area. We collected twenty-five samples um in these two uh areas here, and I'll go ahead and flip to that page and I'll talk to you a little bit about where we collected those samples. So we collected twenty-five samples plus two duplicates in accordance with, as you guys have heard this evening, uh, the sampling and analysis plan that was developed um in concert with some public hearings and then also uh with our staff in our office. In the upper right, you'll see the sampling for the Indiana Street crossing. The yellow dot on that indicates the uh highest sample uh collected there. We'll see that on my next slide, where I have a table that presents uh the highest readings specifically for plutonium. The bottom left um is the crossing of one twenty-eight. Once again, the bottom right-hand, bottom right-hand corner of that screen, you'll see a little yellow dot that shows the sampling locations. As a point of clarification on this, or just a point of knowledge, the Indiana Street crossings is about one sample for every point four four acres. Historic sampling was one sample for every two point three three acres. So significantly denser sampling uh compared to historic sampling. And then with the Colorado one twenty-eight crossing, we had one sample for every point five five acres. Where historically it was one sample for every fourteen point seven acres in that specific exposure unit um for that. Uh, I guess I'll back up real quick here. On the first slide here on that figure one, one dash one, you'll see there's a couple of names, inner drainage, Lower Walnut Creek, No Name Creek, uh, North Creek Drainage. Those are specific exposure units uh that were used for sampling in the past. When I cite those numbers as far as sampling density, specifically when I'm talking about the Colorado one twenty-eight, that's north, that's the Rock Creek Drainage. Historic sampling was a density of about one sample for every fourteen point seven acres. Specifically where we sampled in the light blue, where point, one sample for, per point five five acres. And respectively for the Indiana Street, which is in the windblown area, historically there was sampling there for two point three three, one sample for two point three three acres. Our sampling was at point uh four two acres, one sample per point two four acres. So jumping into the results here real quick, I didn't know this evening, there's been some discussion about different uh constituents of concern. This presentation focuses primarily on plutonium two thirty-eight, two forty. Uh, our report, um, which I believe can be made available to, to the council members, uh, provides the results of all the constituents that we sampled for and tested for, if there's interest in reading the full, full report. So what I want to highlight with this, obviously on the, the left column, we have the two sampled areas. And then we have the associated exposure unit, which I walked through a little bit as we moved left to right across this table. And really where we want to go is, there's the two, what I want to talk about is the two uh numbers of the zero point four five picocuries per gram. Um, and then the nineteen point four picocuries per gram for the Indiana Street crossing. Those are our highest sampled um data points. And as we work across the table from left to right, uh, we're comparing a number of things. We're comparing samples less than background, uh, projected samples less than the wildlife worker uh PRG. And those you can see down there, um, there's a few super scripts that we can get into if we'd like to get into those. And then as we move to the right, projected sample, projected sample mean less than the RIFS mean. Um, and you can see that they were lower than that. And then the, the, the last two columns are the historic maximum results. You can see that our samples, our highest sample is lower than the historic maximum results. And then we're also lower than the cleanup standard, which was fifty picocuries per gram um as far as those results that came from those, that sampling uh effort there with the Colorado one twenty-eight and Indiana Street crossing. And so I want to jump to another sampling event we did specifically in Indiana Street that was requested by City and County of Broomfield. Cause as was mentioned this evening, there was some, there was concerns about potential contamination with depth. So uh, we went out and collected fifty-five more samples at the locations shown here, at the five locations. We drilled two boreings to twenty feet and sampled at one foot increments uh down to the depth of that boring. Those are contained in a report that we have as well, uh, that shows the full sampling profile with depth. Uh, the other samples were sampled at intervals from zero to twelve inches uh to establish how the profile um of potential contamination uh looked with depth. We were asked to do another round of sampling specifically on the refuge itself for the US Fish and Wildlife. We completed sampling at forty-eight locations in twenty nineteen. And then in twenty twenty-two, we went back and completed sampling at twenty-eight locations, additional locations. And the additional sampling in twenty twenty-two uh was completed to address potential trail realignments. You can see on this figure, it's probably a little small and the coloring might be a little, little hard to see, but there's, there's two alignments there. There's a, there's a blue trail system um that we sampled back in twenty nineteen. And then as trail alignments were adjusted, uh, the fuchsia color shows the twenty twenty-two proposed alignment. Uh, we were requested to go back in and resample those locations uh for confirmation sampling of that new proposed trail alignment. The results of that Fish and Wildlife um trail sampling are presented on this slide. Very similar to the last uh table that we looked at a couple of slides ago. This contains um a number of more exposure units. We won't walk through each one of those in the interest of time this evening. But as we, this table's laid out exactly the same, so I won't belabor the point with that, but as we work our way left to right, if we look at our, the results, the highest results in the center column, uh, labeled projected sample maximum, less than RFS mean. We can see the results there. Those results are all less than the sample mean for the RFS. They're less than the historic maximum sampling results and less than the cleanup standard um that was calculated for this site. Our conclusions for the results of the soil sampling indicate that we don't, um, we didn't see a higher risk than presented in the two thousand six Kaiser Hill Report, nor the DOE five-year follow-up in the twenty seventeen report, which allowed public access for the project area.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilors. Thanks for um giving us this time to speak with you this evening. Uh, my name's David Lucas. I work for the US Fish and Wildlife Service. Um. We're gonna be talking about the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge this evening. Um, National Wildlife Refuge is a part of the National Wildlife Refuge System, nationwide um network of lands, almost five hundred million acres managed um across the country. My presentation will mainly focus on why we are here, why we are completing these trails, why we are doing this project. Uh, we've already heard from all sorts of individuals to provide all sorts of background and information. Um, but I'll bring that in where it's appropriate to the decision-making process of why we are doing this project. So the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge Act of two thousand one was passed by Congress, um, which outlined the transfer and the transition of the former Rocky Flats plant into what would become the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. Um, this section that's included, um, for most of our National Wildlife Refugees, we speak of the purposes for which it is established. And this outlines why this refuge was established. It's for restoring and preserving that native ecosystems habitat for wildlife, conserving threatened endangered species, including um Canada species, but our only currently uh federally listed species is the prebelsmocho jumping ma- mouse, which is a federally threatened species. We are also to provide compatible scientific research. And then when we manage the refuge, and it's important, um, US Congress said that we would ensure wildlife-dependent recreation and environmental education and interpretation as priority public uses for the refuge. So Congress required that we do um authorize public recreation where wildlife dependent. But also very important to that will be the environmental education and interpretation of the former history of this location. Last one is comply with response actions, um, supporting depart of energy as necessary, um, in their monitoring, et cetera. That act also required that we complete a master plan. We complete master plans for all of our National Wildlife Refugees. But um, the plan for this location was completed in two thousand five. Um, that was a robust process, multi-year environmental impact statement, tons of public participation, public meetings, um, inputs from the cities, including City of Westminster. I'm including one graphic here, uh, which is uh what was included in two thousand five, which is the proposed public use. Um, you'll see these trails, just take a little visual snapshot, and you'll see that most of this matches what we're seeing in current terms now. But I think what's really important, and like David said, I wish we had thought about laser porn here. Um, but there's a little blue arrow in the bottom right corner that says our future connections to the City of Westminster. Um, so all the way back in two thousand five, um, connection to Westminster was envisioned in the southeast corner of the National Wildlife Refuge. Twenty twenty, um, we actually went through the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, you'll hear that term a lot. Um, process for um these increased public visitation, public recreational opportunities. Um, these blue lines are the, are what were analyzed in this document, which generally is a mirror image of our flat proposals and our connections to these communities to the north in Boulder and to the east and Westminster, consistent with those prior plans, but also consistent with the goals of the Rocky Mountain Greenway, um, which Rachel did a good job of outlining that vision for us. Comminated in the Fonzie, um, that's what we call finding of no significant impact, um, included public comment period. Um, received public comments on that and ultimately led to this document. Real quick snapshots, just to remember why we are here. Um, it's about wildlife and habitat. Um, the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge is extremely unique. Um, it is a anchor in what's almost a hundred thousand acres of contiguous protected lands, including Westminster Hills, open space, all the way to the west to the mountains, all the way to the north to South Boulder. Massive piece of real estate protected for future generations, conserving wildlife, conserving habitat. Over six hundred and thirty species of plants on this property. It's an immense and amazing um ecosystem because it is undeveloped, largely untouched. Um. And that is why this refuge is here and why we have those goals for compatible wildlife-dependent recreation. So people can visit, enjoy um these resources. For fun, I always throw in my geekiest uh photo um of the last couple of weeks. Um, the flowers on the right is the Western False Gromwell, not to be mistaken with the Eastern Gromwell. Or a real gromwell, it's not false, uh, but there it bloom all over right now, and then also Ameriposa Lily, it was happened to be in the picture as well. Um, nature, um, iNaturalist is kind of a fun little uh tool that people can download on your phone if you're looking to identify plants. Um, download Seek iNaturalist and it creates these records of all the plants and animals and other things that you find. The Rocky Flats and Westminster Open Hills are right there. Pretty abundant stuff and pretty abundant recreation and users out there. So Federal Lands Access Program. It's very important to say, Federal Lands Access Program is about creating access to federal lands. This grant would not be a grant if there was not a connection to federal lands. Um, the US Department of Transportation was providing this particular funding source to provide that access to our federal lands. It's not to provide it somewhere else or some other location. So this grant that this large partnership and this large group led by Jefferson County um came together to create a program that would create these connections. Uh, we also did a Federal Lands Access Program grant on the Rocky Mountain Arsenal side. Um, that finished up a handful of years ago. Um, sort of the start of the greenway. Rachel hit this really well, so I'm not going to, um, but basically the vision, connect the refuges to the park. Um, but I will chime in and say, it was not easy. Spent darn near a decade of my life getting this first twenty-three miles done through the urban corridor, right? Through Sand Creek, um, through, down past REI and downtown Denver, working your way across town, coming through Arvada, um, some of Westminster, that corner around Stanley Lake was particularly challenging. And we spent almost two years working with canal companies, trying to work on that underpass that goes under eighty-eighth so that people can get safely under eighty-eighth, and then onto the Stanley Lake Trail, up and around through the the new parking lot that was constructed for this, and then the trail up to the north through Westminster Open Hills. So all that was going down for almost a decade of my life. Um, then we hit the corner of Rocky Flats. We spent a long amount of time looking at alternatives, the feasibility report, et cetera, et cetera. It's a complicated corner. That's why there's not a beltway. Um, it's a complicated corner to get through because we're not trying to destroy habitat. We're trying to make our way around through this area. Um, so we spent weeks wandering around through the city and county of Broomfield, behind their police shooting range, over the uh Great Western Dam, all sorts of things. But it's important to recognize, this is an off-trail, off-highway trail. That's the goal. It's a greenway. Um, sure, it would have been easier to plop a lane on the side of the highway, but that was not the goal of this program. The goal of this program is to get people off of the highways for safe off-road use, right, to make this path. Um, so ultimately that led to where we are with uh the proposal to come in off of Indiana Street. Have to worm our way around through the west, um, and then go out to the north, um, through the Rock Creek Drainage to connect up the Boulder. Um, so lots of years of planning, lots of years of looking at resources, lots of years at trying to figure out the best way to pull this off. So back to this is our current map. Um. These trails are in place on the refuge. I know you guys are aware of that, but the trails are constructed on the refuge. We're only really talking about the connections to get people across highways, across Indiana Street and across, well, under Highway one twenty-eight to the north. So I'm gonna roll this up in my three minutes, um, with what it means kind of to be my job. So I'm a wildlife refuge manager over the complex of all these refuges in northeastern Colorado. Um. It's my job to rely upon the expertise of the scientific agencies that we utilize. One of the first items in your one thousand and nine hundred page uh packet for this evening was um, the response from the State of Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to the environmental assessment. They commented on that document in those three pages, said they support the plan, said that they agree with our assumptions, and that it was sound. That's what I need to do in my job, is to rely upon the US EPA, the Jefferson County Public Health, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. That's based upon decades of work. We are forward-thinking. We're thinking about post-cleanup. Eight billion dollars was spent on the cleanup. Um, extensively sampled, extensively worked on. Um, but also within that is that risk assessment that you hear about. Well, I mean, it's personal. It's based on the wildlife refuge worker. It's based on me, right? Um, you know, more than fifty percent of males living in Colorado will develop cancer at some point in their life. Okay, that's where we live. That's life. That's uh what we are. That basically says that if I spend an exorbitant amount of time, I think it's eighteen, twenty year, Jason, I've got to help, but many, many years of my life working on the Rocky Flats in an area of contamination that does not exist, my increased cancer risk goes up by one in one million. All right. So let's just say it's fifty-two percent of us guys are gonna get cancer. It suddenly becomes fifty-two point zero 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 one. That's what I live with. That's my job. So that risk assessment and those models and all that stuff is pretty important to us, um, and it's based on a lot of science, a lot of data points, and a lot of information. Um, so those are, that's how we make our decisions. Uh, we, we provide the plan, we, we ask for input from these regulatory agencies, and we take that information. That's how we make our decisions. Um. The next part of, I already told you, I spent darn near ten years of my life working on the screenway trails so far. And I want to start working on the Boulder County to finish this up from Lyons to North Boulder. Um, so, construction begins on this project on September ninth. Um, been a long partnership. Um, we've worked with Westminster for a decade. We've worked with Westminster on all sorts of fun things. Um, but on this particular project, we've worked together for a decade. It has made its way all the way to this point where the bridge is ordered. It's being fabricated. Um, and the bridge will probably go up regardless of tonight's decision. Um, it's not, it's in the right way. It's on, uh, it's in that space that's not even City of Westminster. Um, so, you know, looking forward to this finishing as a positive uh partnership between all of our agencies where we started. Um, and then ultimately it's available to any individuals that choose to recreate there. Um, this is not a decision that's being forced on anybody. Um, it's a decision that if you live in Westminster, you live right over here, you live to the south, you live in Arvada like I do, you live where all these folks live. It's their choice to come out whether or not to view the six hundred and thirty plant species, all the wildlife, take advantage of the opportunities, take advantage of the trail system to lead them to other places. Um, and that's in general where the US Fish and Wildlife stands on this project. It's consistent with our plans, it's consistent with our NEPA processes, it's consistent with the regulatory agencies and the scientific expertise that we ask for. And therefore we support it and we will continue to push forward with it. Mr. Hoby.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. I'm Tom Hoby. I'm the Director of Parks and Conservation. And also the Director of Jefferson County Open Space. Um, I want to start off with um just talking about the longtime partnership that Jefferson County Open Space and the City of Westminster uh have enjoyed. Uh, we've been uh at this for about fifty-two years now as a conservation organization. Uh, we've done many, many projects uh with the City of Westminster. Uh, you all are terrific partners. Uh, we uh very much enjoy working with city staff uh and have enjoyed the, the support of council uh throughout many decades. Uh, we've done a lot of great projects together here uh for Westminster and for the region. Um, I want to talk a little bit about our mission. And our mission is, is as part of our, our North Star statements, as, as we call them. And it's, uh, the first part is preserving open space and parkland. We've done that with you all relative to this project. The second part is protecting park and natural resources. And the third part is providing healthy, nature-based experiences. That's the part I want to focus on here. Um, we uh live this every single day. Part of- Part of providing a healthy, nature-based experience is providing safe access. And safe access in this case means safe crossings of highway that's gonna be someday and a busy highway that exists now, State Highway one-twenty-eight. We were asked to be the lead partner in this because both of these crossings lie within Jefferson County, as does the refuge. We willingly took on that role because we are collaborators. And we have collaborated with all of the partner organizations that Rachel mentioned earlier. Boulder County, City of Boulder, Westminster, Arvada, and our own organization, Jefferson County. A couple of things that may be obvious, but I wanna point them out, is that the trails in Boulder County to one-twenty-eight are there, they're complete. The trails in the refuge that David just mentioned are complete. The trails leading up to the crossing on Indiana Street are complete. All but about a hundred, couple hundred feet leading up to that. There was mention about disturbance within Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge from people using trails. Those trails are now surfaced with crushed pine material. So that disturbance is above the natural soil disturbance. As David mentioned, the bridge abutment locations are in the right-of-way for the Parkway. They're not in Westminster land, they're not on federal land. Those abutments have a very small footprint. The construction, there'll be soil testing during construction to ensure that it's at a safe level. We, as part of this project, we did a land acquisition with the city that Rachel mentioned, that was an important acquisition. That's the Woman Creek Reservoir Authority Acquisition, where we partnered and we both provided fifty percent of the funding for that project, around eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for each entity. Your council resolution and our commissioner's resolution both cite that we purchased that property for the purpose of the Rocky Mountain Greenway. So I would just offer that if we are, if there's a decision by this council to withdraw from the partnership, we would certainly hope that there would be a fulfillment of the financial obligations that you have signed on to to date, and that Jefferson County or the rest of the partners wouldn't be burdened with those costs, and that there would be consideration reimbursing Jefferson County Open Space for its investment in the Woman Creek Reservoir Property. We, again, purchased that, and it's in your council resolution and our commissioner's resolution for the purpose of the Greenway. Lastly, I'll just emphasize, safety is really important to us. As David said, we are park, open space, and trail experts. We are not public health experts. We have a strong reliance on our public health partners, our environmental partners, to really look at the data, look at the information, and advise us whether or not a particular situation is safe for the public. We're not interested in putting people in harm's way. That's one of the reasons that we supported the FLAP grants, we agreed to be the lead partner. So I just wanna emphasize that point. From our perspective, we're looking at it from, is this a safe situation to enter people into? And as David mentioned, there's a wonderful range of things to experience on the refuge. Incredible wildlife, incredible plant communities, certainly incredible views. Lots of history on the site for people to learn about. It's a really incredible opportunity to bring people to and through the refuge on the Rocky Mountain Greenway. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for all of your time tonight as well, coming to speak to us about, give us the information about your expertise. I think we can move into questions if everybody, are we finished with all the presentations?
Yes, we're finished with the presentations, and so now would be the time to ask questions. And again, you know, if you, as you choose to spread that across the council, just say who you'd like to ask the question to, they can come forward, speak at the mic.
Okay. I think I'll start with folks online, since I can't see them. So, can start with the mayor first and see if she has questions? Councilor Azadi?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So first, thank you to everyone who spoke. I think it was very informative and very well-balanced. The first question I have is for, so I think his name was Mr. Andrews of the Engineering Analytics Company, if he can come up. Mr. Andrews, your summary conclusion was basically that there wasn't a higher risk than previous DOE studies. The question I have for you is related to Broomfield City Council. So, they stated that one of their main reasons for withdrawing from the original IGA was because of plutonium hotspot? Which I think it was your company that conducted, is that true?
We conducted, we conducted sampling for the Jefferson Parkway, that's correct.
And wasn't that hotspot that you discovered really close by to this project's location?
It was located along Indiana Avenue, I don't have a figure with me this evening, I was not prepared with a figure to discuss the Jefferson Parkway dataset. But it was along Indiana, you are correct.
And that hotspot, can you give a little, maybe like a super quick summary of what that discovery was?
That's a great question, I would love to give a summary of that. As I indicated, I'm not prepared to discuss that hotspot, so I don't, off the top of my head, I don't want to opine on concentrations. I know there was a higher concentration plutonium sample found as part of the Jefferson Parkway sampling that we conducted out there, we went out and did additional step-out sampling. The results of those were provided to the Jefferson Parkway. And I think as far as that goes, somebody from staff or myself, we could reach out to Jefferson Parkway to see if we can release that data to council.
Okay, thank you. My next question is for, was it Mr. Wood?
Yes, speaking.
Hi, Mr. Wood, I think you said that the plutonium may only comprise one percent of the radiation dose.
Less than that.
But, so my question for you is, so as you've seen, we have, we've seen lots of studies, everyone has different results, but if we were to take your results at face value, wouldn't the extreme toxicity and long-term environmental impact still be incredibly dangerous at less than one percent?
Not at all, the sources of those long decay chains, for example, thorium or uranium have half-lives of billions of years. For example, thorium-232 has a lifetime longer than the lifetime of the universe. So, no. Relatively speaking, they all produce alpha particles, and all alpha particles are basically the same in terms of what they do to your body. And the instant you have, this is not my data, by the way, this is, I'm just aware of this data. So, the idea of the lifetime is irrelevant. I wanted to say one other thing about the hot particle that you mentioned earlier. That was a single hot particle believed to be, to have been about eight point eight microns in size, which is immense and very uncommon out of the four hundred and forty-odd samples. They found exactly one like that. The hot particles found by Dr. Ketterer in 2019 were much more typical and much, much smaller. You could inhale, right, the amount you get from one hot particle is very small, the dose you get from that. You could inhale, I think I did a calculation, one thousand three hundred and fifty of those to raise your lifetime cancer risk of about, by one percent. So, hot particles are present, yes, they're not good news, but on the other hand, they're not, you can inhale many of them, that's the most common form in which nuclear workers inhale plutonium. Does that answer your questions?
I have a follow-up. So, in my opinion, I think that when we're talking about even the discovery of one particle, one is too much. And I don't know if you have another explanation to justify the safety risk of the potential of even finding more.
Well, the issue is that those sorts of particles form in soil, they're not unique to plutonium. They're just as true, most likely, of all the other alpha emitters that are already in the soil that are perfectly natural, right? In fact, Dr. Ketterer's measurements from May show that what you find if you filter out the air is exactly what you'd expect based on what's already in the soil. It's a confirmation that the way people have been modeling dose for the last forty years is correct. You wanna know how much you inhale, see what the composition of what you inhale is, it's what you measure in the soil itself. So, a plutonium hot particle is no different from, it is true that there are not likely to be as many hot particles of other radioisotopes. But the main question is, how many do you inhale? Well, a big one was eight point eight microns, and there was one out of four hundred and forty-three samples, and they looked hard for more and didn't find any. The ones found by Ketterer were more like, I think they got it up to about as big as two microns, much, much smaller. I hope that answered your question, another question?
So, my antenna is still raised pretty high, right? Where you're not really explaining the safety risk piece. My next question is for Randy. So, when we talk about epidemiological studies, can you speak more to that?
Yes, thank you, Councilor Azadi. As I reported in my chapter in Doom with a View, there have been about a half a dozen epidemiological studies of the population downwind of Rocky Flats in history. The first one, and the only one to be published in a peer-reviewed scientific journal, was by Dr. Carl Johnson, former Jefferson County Public Health Director. And he compared cancer incidence rates according to the contours of the Cray-Harty map, which is the colorful map that was displayed tonight, showing different intensities of plutonium contamination the closer you get to the site. He definitively found statistically valid increases in cancer rates of lung and bone cancer the closer to Rocky Flats you got. And he was corroborated by another study. I think it was for one of the lawsuits, I can't remember which one, but the researcher was Stephen Chin, and he had some collaborators, and he found that not only did the distance from Rocky Flats matter, but also the direction from Rocky Flats mattered because of the prevailing wind direction. The wind at Rocky Flats prevails from the west with a slight northerly component. So, if you live east-southeast of the nine oh three area, which is the source of the plutonium contamination, you are more likely to have cancer than if you live farther south or farther north. Then there was a study funded by DOE that also corroborated Johnson initially. And then, this researcher was named Krupp, and he put in a urbanization adjustment, which was criticized by other experts later. And the urbanization adjustment allowed him to refute Dr. Johnson's findings after initially corroborating them. CDPAG has also conducted cancer studies of the downwind population, and their studies compare cancer incidence rates in a large swath of the northwest metropolitan area that they consider to be in proximity to Rocky Flats, and it includes places like Nywhat and Brighton, which are tens of miles away, not downwind and not contaminated. So they compare cancer incidence in that big swath to cancer incidence that's not in that swath. And of course, what they find is fairly similar rates of cancer incidence because they are not specifically looking at the differences in rates between the Stanley Lake region and elsewhere. They're looking at one large choke of the metro area to another large choke of the metro area. So, this is actually a point on which I agree with David Wood. Measurement is extremely important. And the only thing that really matters to be measured is the health of the population around here. And there has not been methodologically credible recent epidemiological study ever since Richard Clapp for the Cook v. Rockwell lawsuit, who was eminently qualified. So what we really should be doing to resolve this debate about the health consequences of Rock Flats contamination is we should be monitoring and studying the health of the downwind population. In my presentation, I provided empirical evidence of rare cancers immediately downwind of Rocky Flats. Why are cancers occurring there and not elsewhere? That is the question to be answered. If it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, talks like a duck, it's a duck. Did that answer your question, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And one last question for, I'm trying to think of the person's name now. Rachel Brennan?
Hello?
Hi, Rachel, I'm sorry, there's an echo, I'm hearing an echo on my side.
I don't.
Is there an echo on that side?
No, we're not hearing one here.
Okay, so my question is related to the costs. You mentioned that there are additional costs that will be incurred if Westminster was to drop out?
It's a possibility, not a certainty.
What are those costs?
The costs would be related to contractual changes with the contractor. Federal Highways has signed a contract with the company performing the construction work. And if there are changes to that contract, then the Federal Highways has to go through a process to compensate the contractor for those changes. For example, if something was eliminated from the scope of the project. And those costs associated with changing the scope of the project and compensating the contractor. and compensating the contractor, uh, would be additional costs and may be, uh, passed on to the local agency partners. The Federal Highways project managers don't like to speak about what-ifs. So that's why I'm saying maybe, because those are possibilities that have happened on other contracts, but, uh, may not, may or may not happen in this case.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Councilor Ireland? So, can you stay there?
Yes.
So who has the contracts? Who has the contracts for the bridge? Who has the contracts to build this greenway path?
Uh, Federal Highways has contracted with a company called Tribal One. And they're, I believe, out of Pueblo. Um, and they are partnered with a larger contractor. Tribal One and they're, they're in a mentorship program with a larger contract. And I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of that contractor. MW is, there are...
I would like that information, please.
Sure, we can provide that.
Okay. What was other questions? So Mr. Wood, is that your name? So I heard that plutonium has a fingerprint, so you can tell where it came from. So that hot particle, do you know for a fact that it went, came from Rocky Flats?
Uh, I don't know that for a fact, but I'd be astounded if it hadn't.
Okay, thank you. Maybe, I don't know who can answer this, but is it true? I've lived here for almost 40 years. So I remember when Rocky Flats Arsenal was planned and developed and it was because it was the only safe thing to do with that property. That we could not build out there homes or anything else, all we could use it is for conservation. Tell me if that's true. Randy?
May I please clarify, are you referring to Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge?
Right.
Yes, um, for my chapter in Doom With A View, I interviewed Doug Young, who was the staffer to Congressman Mark Udall, who actually authored the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge Act of 2001. And I wanted to understand the forces that led to that act. And what Mr. Young told me is that, um, Congressman Udall, in whose district at the time Rocky Flats sat, wanted to preserve the site as open land after, um, the nuclear weapons plant was closed and cleaned up because he was concerned that it would be developed, that, that the land would be developed by real estate developers. And he knew, um, of the, of the contamination and therefore he wanted to conserve it as open land. And according to Doug Young, um, a proposal was made by Congressman Wayne Allard, from the other party and from another district to turn it into a national wildlife refuge. And that proposal gained momentum and the act was written. And the act included, um, a transportation right-of-way, uh, on the west side of Indiana Street, the easternmost 300 feet of the refuge, um, at the insistence of, uh, Jefferson County, Arvada and, uh, Broomfield at the time. So that was the reason and, um, as you may know, if, if you know the history of the area, much of the land on which Rocky Flats site sits was acquired from the Church family, for whom Church Ranch Road is named. And the Church family is behind the developments of at least Whisper Creek and Candellas. They, they are, it's very well documented how much the Church family wanted to develop their land. And I think that was why Congressman Udall was concerned about conserving the site as open land.
So, so while you're there, can you tell me why we built a greenway path through that? When it was not safe to build anything?
Why we built a greenway?
Yeah, why was that approved?
Well, I believe that, uh, Mr. Lucas was, is trying to do his job. And I, I believe he's trying to, um, implement the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge Act of 2001 and whatever decisions came from that that turned into a network of trails. Uh, the, the only refuge manager in the entire Fish and Wildlife Service history who has had a similar experience is my uncle. He was the manager of the Alaska Maritime National Wildlife Refuge, which included the island of Amchitka, where underground nuclear weapons testing occurred. And he had employees and their families stationed on Amchitka and they developed cancers later in life. Um, my uncle, John L. Martin, retired, um, is very much against, um, turning former DoD and DOE sites into national wildlife refuges. I, he gave me his permission to cite and quote his opinion, which I've shared with you. And, um, I agree with him.
Well, I just have to say I was surprised that they ever approved building that path. Because when I knew about them making a conservation area, it was supposed to be off limits to people. And now suddenly new people.
I think Randy did a good job of just kind of explaining legislative intent. Um, you had, um, Allard, um, and Udall were the primary architects behind that. So there's two things afoot here. There's, there's a legislative intent and then there's also the scientific regulatory releases, et cetera, et cetera, um, that back up different things. So ultimately, you know, if you, if you really look at the facts, the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Act and the Rocky Flats Act, um, it is based about balancing those political momentums, um, at the arsenal. Do we all want residential development on it? We want to create...